Good afternoon, and we will call this meeting to order. Welcome to April 2nd meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Clerk, can you please call roll to determine a quorum?
Councilmember DeForest?
Councilmember Lavell?
I am here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to public comments. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on closed session items only?
Seeing none, Madam Mayor, and if I may, I'd like to go over the closed session agenda.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Please proceed.
The city council will meet as listed on the agenda on closed session on two items. CS1, conference with labor negotiators. City council will conduct a closed session pursuant to government code section 54957.6 with the city manager, the city attorney, and the city's negotiators regarding labor negotiations with the Marietta General Employees Association and the Marietta Supervisors Association. City council will also meet in CS2, conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation. City will conduct a closed session pursuant to government code section 54956.92 because there is a significant exposure to litigation in three cases.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We will recess to closed session. With that, we are going to recess to closed session and will reconvene at 6:00 PM for the regular meeting. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 2nd regular meeting of the Marietta City Council is now called to order. Madam City Attorney, please provide a report from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council met in closed session on a total of four items. The first one was to confer with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6. On that item, the council was updated, no reportable action. The other three items were all anticipated litigation pursuant to government code sections 54956.92. On those three as well, the council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Madam City Clerk, can you please call roll to determine a quorum?
Councilmember DeForest?
Here.
Councilmember Lavell?
I am here.
Councilmember Holliday?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Warren?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mrs. Carol Holler, remain standing for the invocation led by Saul Wrangel from Calvary Baptists. Please place your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather together for the Marietta council meeting, we ask for your presence here with us, Lord. Lord, give us your wisdom to each member of the council as they consider, examine, and envision the future for our city that you bless us with. May their decisions, Lord, bring enjoyment, commerce, contentment to the entire population of Marietta. Lord, we ask for your blessing on all that takes place here this evening, and also ask for a special blessing for all our safety, public safety personnel here in the city, and ask that you bless our U.S. military. And, Lord, at this time also, we're celebrating the retirement of Mr. Holler. Lord, we just thank you for him as a city, as a city council, Lord, for all his dedicated services given to all the population here in this great city you've blessed us with. Lord, we ask and give thanks for all these blessings you've given to us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Moving on to presentations, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have Patrick Ellis here, President and CEO of Marietta Wildemar Chamber of Commerce. He's here to accept the proclamation.
Thank you, Patrick. Why don't you come to the podium, please? So it is Marietta Innovation Month, whereas the city of Marietta recognizes the importance of innovation in growing its business community, and whereas the city of Marietta is dedicated to ensuring and welcoming an supportive environment where businesses can thrive, whereas the city of Marietta aims to promote an innovation ecosystem that supports the transformation of new ideas to reality through access to resources and investments, and whereas the city of Marietta is growing as a regional hub for healthcare services and life science innovation, and whereas the city of Marietta Innovation Center is dedicated to incubating life science startups and providing resources to business community through mentorship and partnership, and whereas Riverside County is experiencing explosive growth in various fields, and whereas the city of Marietta supports a Riverside County Innovation Month initiative that showcases successful startups and highlights innovative and entrepreneurial programs, events in Riverside County. Now, therefore, let it be known that we, the city of Marietta council, do hereby acknowledge the importance of encouraging the growth in innovation, technology, and entrepreneurship in our community, and proclaim that the month of April as Innovation Month in the city of Marietta. Dated on this day, second day of April 24, myself as the mayor and my fellow colleagues, Mayor Pro Tem Warren, Councilmember DeForest, Holliday, and Lavell, we want to congratulate you on Marietta Innovation Month. So thank you so much for all that you do. As you know, we had a women's conference where we highlighted many of the female scientists that are at the Innovation Center, and I want to let you know that the response from the audience in learning about the Innovation Center and the startups that are right in our own backyard, it was very, very successful. And we want to thank you for your vision and how much you have put into this program, and it is just so successful. So we'd like to give you a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. It's my honor to accept this on behalf of everyone who works to promote innovation in Riverside County, especially here in Marietta. Very honored to be able to help lead what is going on at the Marietta Innovation Center. As you said, we've got some phenomenal startups. This year is a very exciting year as we get ready to start construction on putting a wet lab in the building and taking what we're doing there to a whole new level. So we're excited about that. And again, the idea of showcasing April as Innovation Month for the county of Riverside is to really help continue that story of how much innovation, how many amazing startups are happening right here in Riverside County, and really then showcasing it to the world at large. So we're excited to do that, and thank you so much for the proclamation. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome. And so if my colleagues would join me with Patrick to get a quick little picture? We are going to have council first begin and have a few words. So Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to begin?
Sir, did you like that? Your dedication and your expertise has moved this city forward in so many ways that are positive and insightful, and I don't know how I would be where I am today without some of your expertise, your mentorship, and your support. I know that your job has taken you away from your family many a times, and I want to thank your family for allowing us to have your dad and your husband, because I do know that late meetings and long council meetings means time away from you. You know, in the military, they say not just one serves, but all serves, and in public service, all serves. So thank you for all you have done for our community. On behalf of me and my family, we do love you, we will miss you, and please don't be a stranger, and enjoy your retirement. Please do something fun. Godspeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Warren. Councilmember DeForest?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ivan? I want to thank you for the "yes, you can" attitude when everybody else was saying,[665.87][665.87]"Maybe not." "We can get this done" attitude, which you always have had. And thank you for putting the best interest of our community at the forefront when helping us make difficult decisions. I appreciate your insight to difficult decisions, and most of all, your historical knowledge of projects in the city of Marietta. I appreciate you teaching me about development on so many levels. You truly have been a wonderful asset to Marietta. I want you and Carol to enjoy retirement, as well as your boys, and cherish every moment because we know life is short and memories matter. I am sure that you and Carol will make lots of fun and great memories in retirement. My husband Lance says, "Congratulations, sir," and he knows you will continue to protect and serve, so you better be safe. And I'll say, "God bless you, and please keep in touch."
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ivan, we actually met before I was on council. You helped me out with a problem I was having down at my church, and I was pleasantly surprised to find that you epitomize public servant. You definitely have a heart to help others, and it's what public service is all about. And since I've been on council, I've gotten to know you better and have cherished the relationship that we've started, and I'm proud to call you brother and friend. Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Councilmember Lavell?
I vote no.
I second that.
Is that an option? No. One of my first memories of Ivan on council is walking in, and he was talking about my truck, and he then alluded to he was just making sure I didn't hit his truck as I was backing in. So, you know, to that, you always have a smile on your face, you always have a positive attitude, and I really appreciate it. Even my time at Planning Commission, all of your insight and guidance echoing what all of them had said already, you are going to have big shoes left to be filled. So thank you for all of your service, and your friendship especially. Happy retirement.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavell. Oh, gosh, I hate this. The minute that I walked through the door, you were my rock. There was never a stupid question or a dumb question with regards to the city function. You always made me feel very valued, and it's so appreciated. You are such a true professional, and what my colleagues up here have stated, I say 100 times more, sir. My mother used to have a saying that the richest people in the world are not those that have the biggest bank accounts or the biggest white truck. It is those that leave behind a really good name. And I want you to know that in the world of politics and city and county government, sir, you're one of the richest people I've ever met. I look forward to calling you and still leaning on you, especially when it comes to development, and you're loved and you are so appreciated. We want to wish you the best of health. We hope you enjoy your retirement, and if for any reason you feel like you want to come back, give me a call, sir. Anyways, God bless, and thank you for your years of service. With that, my colleagues and I are going to read a portion of the proclamation that we have for you. I don't know who's number one. Oh, thank you, Councilmember DeForest, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas Ivan Holler is a California licensed landscape architect, having graduated from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, and whereas Ivan Holler has been with the city of Marietta for nine years, having worked in several capacities. First, serving as the Development Service Director from April of 2015 through June of 2017, and as the Assistant City Manager from July 2017 to April of 2024, and...
Whereas Ivan Holler's guidance, integrity, and direction overseeing all land use development activities, including planning, engineering, public works, and building, has been a driving force behind several landmark projects in the city. And whereas Ivan Holler's steadfast leadership has been pivotal in pursuing projects that position the city of Marietta for long-term success and growth, including the entitlements of Carmax, Kaiser Medical Campus, Costco, and the Marietta Hot Springs Resort, and...
Whereas Ivan Holler in particular spearheaded the mission to utilize ARPA funding in two projects to bring water service to unserved areas of the city, Alamo Hills and Madison Avenue Corridor. And whereas Ivan Holler's drive for development, transparency, and collaboration led him to found the city's Development Advisory Group, where developers, engineers, and special districts have the opportunity to meet with city staff to address procedures and concerns, and...
Whereas Ivan Holler is a staunch advocate for public safety. He laid the foundation to what would eventually become the San Diego County Fire Authority and was sworn in as a Reserve Deputy Sheriff for the San Diego County Sheriff's Department in April of 2021, where he continues to serve and protect the community during special events, weekends, and on as-need basis. And whereas Ivan Holler's hard work and dedication would not have been possible without his wife, beautiful wife, Carol, who has been married to him since 1988, two adult children, and a daughter-in-law, who have been a constant support system, and...
Now, therefore, let it be known, the Marietta City Council does hereby honor and thank Ivan Holler for his service to the city of Marietta, as well as his dedication and commitment to public service, dated this second day of April 2024, on behalf of myself, the mayor, and the entire city council, our city manager, our entire staff, and our 119,000 residents. So, Councilmember DeForest, I have a plant here from all of us to present to Mr. Holler. You have flowers? John, there is the bag that has the gift, and Councilmember Holliday is the proclamation. And Ivan, we're going to present these gifts to you, but we're going to have you wait till the very, very end to say a few words because there's a lot of people here tonight that have a few words to say on your back.
We hope that you will place that in your home office proudly. There is a plant from all of us to say a little thank you. We have some flowers for Mrs. Holler as well, and we would like for you to come up and join the council, please. And there is a beautiful gift for you that is a watch, an engraved watch as a departing gift. So again, we're going to have you speak at the very end, but we want to just take this opportunity and just tell you how much that we love you. Thank you for your years of service. We're going to do a quick little picture. We're going to have you sit down because there's more to come, sir.
I answered everything, so not a problem. Yeah, you don't get off that easy. Come on up. Okay, so 10 years ago, I came to the city, and I was the Assistant City Manager, and the closest person that I knew was probably 60 miles away, and I was definitely a fish out of water. So fast forward a year later, and with the former city manager, we went through interviews and selected the next Director of Development Services. And we quickly became good friends and fellow fish out of water. When the city manager retired and I was appointed as city manager, I had the task of filling the assistant role. And as I sat down and tried to write down for recruitment all of the things that I was looking for in an assistant, and the most important things were someone who was willing to throw themselves in with a first-time city manager and take some of those risks with me, someone that was considered trustworthy not only by me, but also by the city council, obviously someone professional, someone that I could leave the city with so that I could go on vacation every now and then, but most importantly, somebody who would love the city and this organization as much as I did. So as I sat there looking at that list, I thought, "I don't need to go out and do a recruitment. I have that person on my staff already." So the hard part was getting him talked into it, because he didn't really ever want to be an Assistant City Manager, and if he knew how many times he would have to wear a tie, he probably would have turned me down. But thankfully, he did not turn me down. Over the years, and it would be an understatement to say, we've dealt with some really amazing things and some really crazy things, think pandemic. We've been through a lot together, and you have proven to be a wonderful city... Sorry, number two. And a great side perk, I got to be friends with his lovely wife, which we'll continue to do, and I know how fortunate I've been to have you, and I do appreciate you. So I hope you cut up your ties and go have some... Cut them all up, cut them up, do something with them, and go have a good time. And on behalf of the executive team, Ivan Holler, here's your sign.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. So, Madam Mayor and city councils, you see there are several people here for Mr. Holler, and they would like to acknowledge him, of course. And so what we'd like to do is, we're going to call on the dignitaries first, and then we're going to take some public comments of some that wrote in that could not make it, and then we will do public comment of individuals that are here. So my request is, if you would like to comment on Mr. Holler's retirement, please go see Rachel and let her know just so I can get your name and get you in the queue. And with that, I would like to call up honorary representative for Congressman Darrell Issa, Chris Brown.
So I actually have two roles today. One, Ivan and I have been friends for close to 25 years. You're not dying, you're just retiring. You're not dying, right? You're not dying. Get a hold of it. We've been friends for 25 years. I first met in San Diego, and he, as the council has said and other people have said, "You're a stand-up guy, integrity." And one of the things you know once Ivan's your friend, he's your friend. He'll be there for you, whatever you need, advice, a kick in the ass, oops, sorry, kick in the butt, but he'll be there. And so I'm here to personally say congratulations on your retirement. My wife and I look forward to having you and Carol for dinner. I'm sorry, Carol, that he's retiring because that means he's going to be at home a little bit more often, so if you need him out of the house, call me up and we'll go shooting or something. So on the second role today, Darrell Issa has been a longtime friend of mine, probably 30 years, and Darrell's been a friend of Ivan's. And so when he was retiring, we said, "Hey, let's get Ivan a proclamation." Unfortunately, Darrell couldn't be here. He's actually out of state, but he did definitely want to do a proclamation for you. So the honorary thing was, I said, "Darrell, you know, we're going to do this proclamation." He's like, "Well, you go do it. You know Ivan better than anybody, but I'm going to have to swear you in as an honorary Deputy Chief of Staff so that we can make it official." And I said, "Okay." And he goes, "But don't let the power go to your head. You only get this power for 24 hours." So, and then I did speak to him today, and he did want me to make sure that he expressed his personal feelings for you. Great job. Congratulations on your retirement. And he did say, as Darrell tends to do, "Hey, Chris, don't F it up." So hopefully I didn't F it up. But on behalf of the congressman, congratulations on your retirement and...
Madam Mayor, I have from Senator Kelly Seartow's office and Assemblywoman Kate Sanchez's office, I have Hilda Sam and Desiree Ferraro.
So on behalf of Assemblywoman Kate Sanchez, she didn't get to serve longer than a year with you as the Assistant City Manager, but during that time, we did depend on your experience, knowledge. So thank you so much for serving our city. It's a pleasure for her to serve the city, but with people like you serving the city and upholding just everything that Marietta stands for, it made it a pleasure for her to start that first year. So thank you so much. Congratulations on your retirement, and we wish you the best.
So on behalf of Senator Seartow, we want to, and Assemblymember Sanchez, we want to present you with this joint resolution, which is the legislature's way of recognizing you, celebrating you, and thanking you for your long, expansive, and successful career in public service. The city of Marietta has been lucky to have you these past nine years, and we hope you sincerely enjoy your retirement. It's well deserved. Thanks, Ivan.
I feel like I'm picking on Councilmember Holliday.
I have Supervisor Chuck Washington.
Oh, shoot. I'll just wing it. Thanks. You know, it occurred to me, Ivan, that this is kind of an inflection point for me, something I can be proud of, because you and I started the new jobs at the same time, nine years ago. And you're retiring, and I'm not. So I outlasted you, right? No, you've been amazing for the city of Murrieta. We moved here in 89 with a six-year-old, and we had a little time where I worked for the city. And it was a lot of fun. It was a brand-new city, and we worked hard. But it makes me very proud of what the city has become. And I know, in large part, it's because of folks like you, who commit themselves to public service, serving constituents. And it warms my heart, because I have family still living here in Murrieta, daughter, son-in-law, and three grandkids. So I know that you've created this vibrant city that is safe, thriving, a great place to raise a family, good schools, lots to be proud of. And I feel like I owe you a personal debt of gratitude for not only working alongside me while I was at my county job, to help me create a better environment for all of this area, this region, but for Murrieta as well, and also for my own family. So thank you for that commitment and the great public servant that you are. There's a lot of whereas's, and I think that's a reflection of how long you've been a great public servant. 27 years in public service. We tried to capture all of that here, and then the seal of the Riverside, County Riverside, and my signature on that, on behalf of the Third District and the half a million residents in the Third District. So congratulations, good luck on your retirement. I know you're going to, like you do with everything, you're going to be great at retirement. I know it. Yeah.
Madam Mayor, with Eastern Municipal Water District, I have Nick Canettis, Assistant General Manager.
Good evening again, Nick Canettis, Deputy General Manager with the Eastern Municipal Water District. And on behalf of our Board of Directors and our executive management team, I just want to express that the relationship that we have with the city of Murrieta, we value, and there's nothing as strong as that. And a key person in helping establish that relationship is Ivan, and we celebrate tonight your retirement. Ivan, you and I have worked together on a number of initiatives. When we first met, you came to me with a few issues over the years. One of them, which is very much embedded in my mind, is our ongoing Los Alamos Hills Water System. Ivan came to me one day and said, hey, we've got this area, it's not in your service area. Let's work together and figure out how we can make this happen. He said, I have money? I said, okay, that's a good start. We can go from there. But I found Ivan to be the consummate professional and the partner in many, many endeavors. Ivan was one of the key participants in our inaugural Water Academy's leadership class, and really appreciate you taking the initiative to, you know, understand and learn what we do and put that into effect. So Ivan, really enjoy working with you, going to miss you a lot. But great partnership and relationship. And with that, brought a small gift here that I want to present to you. It's just a little token of our appreciation and something to maybe help you with kicking back and relaxing through retirement and thinking, fond, MD. Check it out later.
Madam Mayor, with Rancho, California Water District, Board Member Rob Grantham.
Kim, Ivan, so we passed a resolution in honor of you. There's a lot of whereas's in here. Whereas Ivan's a gun-carrying deputy, I should say something nice about him, somewhere embedded in here. But, like my good friend, you have been an amazing partner. I came to work with the community three years ago, and between you and Kim, really the warm welcoming, letting us be, you know, serve this community. I don't know if you all know this, but Ivan is a water wonk, followed only secondarily by Kim. Clearly sad? Thank you. But I'm going to miss seeing you, just on a professional basis, but we're going to continue to go to eight-bit, and we're going to continue to be friends. So thank you so much for letting us do a great job on behalf of the community, and to pair it with what the council said. Thank you so much on behalf of myself and our Board of Directors. Thank you.
With Western Municipal Water District, Brenda Densted and Tim Barr.
Well, we've got one of these to decorate your wall, too. A lot of whereas's in here, but Ivan, you know what? I've known you since you got here. We have done a lot of work together. I appreciate your enthusiasm. I appreciate your professionalism, your dedication. As a Murrieta resident, I appreciate everything that you do for the city and all of the things that you have done for all of those residents here, all of these people. You know, when a lot of people show up, it's a true testament of who you are as an individual, because we are here by choice, and we are not here for any other reason. So thank you for everything that you have done for Western, for me as a resident, and for the entire city.
So Ivan, I'm Tim Barr. I'm the Deputy General Manager of Western Municipal Water District. I have the privilege to collaborate with Ivan on multiple occasions for the benefit of the residents and citizens we jointly serve. Although Director Densted got to do the formal proclamation, I wanted to make sure that both Craig Miller, and Craig Miller's the General Manager, Craig Miller Knight, our voice was heard tonight, and the rest of Western staff. That said, honestly, I'm mostly here because of my personal appreciation for the years of professional collaboration that I've had with you, Ivan. I'm privileged to acknowledge the outstanding contributions of a remarkable individual. Ivan, your dedication to the residents and businesses of this growing city, your talents and your unwavering commitment to excellence have not gone unnoticed by the Western team. In all our collaborations, you've exemplified professionalism, innovation, leadership, and a genuine passion for service to the community. Your dedication, expertise, and unwavering commitment have left an indelible mark on the city of Murrieta. Your insights have been invaluable, and your presence will be missed. Is with both joy and a touch of sadness that we bid farewell to a valued colleague and friend. Ivan, as you embark on this new chapter in your life, know that your legacy here in Murrieta will endure. Your contributions have helped shape the economic and community success Murrieta enjoys today and will for a long time into the future. On behalf of the staff at Western Water, I extend my heartfelt gratitude for your years of hard work. And on behalf of myself, I am thankful for your enduring humor and friendship. May your retirement be filled with endless joy, relaxation, and adventure.
And if I could have Andy Morris with Elsinore Valley Water District, please.
Well, good evening. You know, I got to do a couple different roles. I was obviously Chairman of the Board for the Chamber of Commerce, and got to work with Ivan, and eat many breakfasts and attend many events with you. And it was just amazing to do that with you, because you're just somebody that you can get along with so easy, and you're so friendly. And that's something that it's not, you don't see it all the time, and you make people feel so warm. And for a businessperson like myself, who is trying to grow this amazing city, you were the perfect person to come to this city and be part of that. And so from that side of the business, you were amazing, and I loved that time I got to spend with you. And then on a personal note, he has my cellphone. So all of a sudden, about a week and a half ago, I see my phone ringing, and it says Ivan Holler on it, and I'm like, oh, there's either a leak? Or he's got an idea for a business thing he might want to run by me. And that's the kind of call. And what amazed me the most about it was, he was telling, he just wanted to let me know two things. One, he was getting together with some of my staff to build a relationship with them. That's somebody who's retiring. A week and a half before they retire, they're building relationships with people, and that is amazing. And the other one was to make sure that you invited me here tonight for your retirement. And I really appreciate that. I personally am going to miss you, and just congratulations and enjoy your retirement, buddy.
If I can please have former Murrieta City Councilmember, Randon Lane.
It is, it's an incredible honor to be here tonight. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to give a little bit of my resume, and there's a lot of people in this room who have served in more places than I have and done more things than I have, but I'm going to make a point in a moment. I had the privilege of serving as a Planning Commissioner when I first got involved in the city of Murrieta. I served on the city council, served as its mayor twice. I served as Kevin Jeffries, who's now County Supervisor, is in the State Assembly. When he was in the State Assembly, I served as his district director. I was on the city council for just under 12 years, and in 19, I stepped down. I had an opportunity to go work for the President in Washington, DC, and served as his Director of Government and Public Affairs to the DOT with Secretary Chaff. Why do I tell you all this? Because I've had the unique privilege of working in really every level of government, at the local level, at the state level. I've worked with Kevin Jeffries at the county level. I've been at the federal government. And it is a unique person that you can look at after serving in all of those capacities to say, he's one of the few people who actually gets it. And no matter what you do, no matter what level of government you're at, there are some times you look and you see people who really shouldn't be serving in the public sector. There are some people who have a passion for making things better. And Ivan is one of those unique individuals who has a passion for making things better. When I came back from DC, I did some consulting and did some work here in the city of Murrieta. And I can say from a personal perspective, Ivan was one of those people who, he never really said no. He would say, maybe that's not allowed in the development code, but let's try and find a way to work around that to help you be successful. Now, there were times he would just look at you and say, no. But that was because there was no workaround, but he would do his best to try and find that workaround to make things better. And if you look at this city, you see that he was successful in making things better. The two things that stand out in my mind is, for years, we worked on CarMax and trying to get CarMax into this community. Ivan was an incredible part of bringing that to the city of Murrieta and making it work, because there were a lot of hurdles in getting CarMax here. Costco, I didn't have the privilege of being on the city council, but when this came through, but we had the, we worked on that, trying to get that to come to the city of Murrieta. And I know what a long trials and tribulations of trying to get that here to the city of Murrieta, some very big projects. But I am incredibly honored that I had the short time to work with Ivan, and not just work with him, but to have the opportunity to become his friend. And I will say, I, please forgive me, I forgot your name, but he said earlier that when you find out that Ivan's your friend, Ivan is your friend. And it has been a unique experience. It has been an incredible joy to get to know you over the years. And I look forward, I'm not going to say goodbye or wish you well, I'm going to say, I look forward to more time that we can spend together. Congratulations on your retirement, and congratulations to all the wonderful things that I know that you are going to do.
Madam Mayor, so that concludes this portion of the dignitaries. So I'd like to read, if I may, just a few correspondence that I did receive, because they could not be part of this. So the first one, Ivan, is from Eileen and Phil Delaney. Ivan, congratulations on your retirement. No need to overthink anymore. Travel, go places, and have fun. Live. She put an explanation mark there. Wishing you and Carol all the best in your new life adventures. Your old friends, Eileen and Phil Delaney. I also have one from Davia Lynch, the Director of Planning and Development Services, interim Deputy Chief Administrative Officer at the County of San Diego. I'd like to offer my congratulations to Ivan Holler on this much-deserved career and life milestone. You made it. I want to thank you for your mentorship throughout my career, especially in the early days over 20 years ago. You were an advocate for me when women were not as commonly seen in the upper ranks of our field. Gave me opportunities and steered me onto leadership paths that would not have been available if not for your belief in me and support of my development. Thank you for your guidance and wisdom throughout the years. I still reach back to those lessons regularly. Most of all, thank you for being a shining example of leading with character, always doing the right thing instead of the easy thing. Enjoy your retirement, Ivan. You have earned it. And lastly, I have from Mr. Alan Long. I apologize for not being able to attend the meeting, as I am out of town. However, this email is written with no less sincerity and respect. I've had the unique opportunity to work with Ivan Holler as a council member, citizen, business owner, and consultant. In all regards, Ivan's service has been second to none. In fact, my entire life, I have never met anyone that was able to consider all perspectives, find common ground, provide solutions, and have a path for progress better than Ivan Holler. While I'm writing this to congratulate Ivan on his retirement, it is bittersweet, as he will be sorely missed. Mr. Holler is the type of person and the employee you would want to mentor those most dear to you. I can say without equivocation, Ivan Holler is irreplaceable. They just don't make them like this anymore. Congratulations, we wish you the best in the next chapter of your life. Sincerely and respectfully, Alan Long. And so now, if I may, call up Madam Mayor, public comments of those that are here.
Yes, Madam City Clerk.
Mr. Cassin Klein.
I'm not going to go through my resume, but I'm speaking as a longtime resident, business owner, but mostly as your friend. Now, I want to talk about legacy. I've often said, two of the greatest things that Rick Dudley did was hire Kim and hire you. Of all the things that I've done over my 35-year career, with all the certificates, I have two letters hanging on my wall. One is from my fire chief, and one is dated June 9, 2015, from you inviting me to the Development Advisory Group. Many things have been said about you tonight, which are absolutely true. You've been the consummate professional, but you've been an amazing gatekeeper, and that has protected, I believe, our city. Our residents will never know the quality of life that they experience because of your contributions to our city. I've never met anyone with more integrity, more honesty, and as much as you could be transparent to the public, as much as you are. For the past couple of years, I've been asking Ivan, when are you going to punch out? And he has said to me, well, as soon as I pick up the rock and there's nothing under the rock. Now, this isn't a rock. This is a crystal. So it's clear, he can see there's nothing underneath it. You don't play golf, but this is a golf ball, and it has my logo on it for my company, which is hopefully significant, right, for you for placing me on the Development Advisory Group. And it's number six, for those of you who might know that. The last thing I'll say, I think Lori, you talked about, or one of you talked about, all the projects that you helped entitle, but Fast Five was left out. And that's significant because we had a meeting with Lori and Lisa, and one of the first things that Lisa said was to Ivan was, how did you let Fast Five in? And the reason why I tell that story is because it goes to Ivan's integrity, right? There were many people in the city that did not want Fast Five across the street from City Hall, including Ivan. But Ivan's integrity stood up for the development code and our general plan. And even though his own personal feelings were not necessarily desiring that project near City Hall, he upheld the vision of the city, which was our development plan and our general, and our general plan. So those, that's all I can put into words for you. My friendship for you, the mentoring that you gave to me, seeing me through my hard time when Chase was away. I can't thank you enough. Your boys and Carol, you guys should be so proud of him. Carol, you know, I've never met a man that loves his wife more, is more dedicated to her. And boys, I've never met a man more proud of his boys. We've had many conversations over lunch, not necessarily about the city or about projects, but about you folks. And that speaks volumes about your dad and your husband. Thank you.
Well, Ivan, this is a sad day for us, obviously. You have been such a, an amazing proponent for the business community on so many different levels. And, you know, as Cassin just said, like, there are so many people that will never know the lengths and the extent that you've gone through to get things through and the projects and, and all of the different aspects of, you know, what the city has become. I think what resonates is what everyone has said here tonight is, it's, it's one thing that you've been dedicated to the city and everything you've done. It's one thing that you've been dedicated and you meet with people and you have, you're such an unbelievably friendly person. But every single person that's come up here has said that you're a friend, and that speaks volumes. You know, it's more than just, you know, there's a lot of us that do things because we love what we do, but you don't ever have to take that extra step. But when you take that extra step, that speaks volumes, and you've done an amazing job with the city. Obviously, you have an amazing family. I am very honored to consider you a friend. I knew you were going to get a lot of plaques, a lot of things to put on your wall. So on behalf of the chamber, our board of directors and the staff, we wanted to get you a little something, but probably a little something more in closer and dear to your heart. So on behalf of the Murrieta Oldhamar Chamber of Commerce, this is for you.
Sure. Open it up, sure.
You're not drinking alone.
And Madam Mayor, the last speaker I have, Stephen Wimberly.
Well, I walked in not going to say anything, but I met Ivan real quick back in 2019. Did not have a chance to actually quote-unquote "work" with him, but we were punished in the gym by our current chief when he tried to send us to heaven early. But we're still here. So Ivan, if you could come up for a second, as a chaplain, I want to be able to pray for my brothers as he heads into this new chapter of his life. So Father, we come before you right now and I lift up Ivan and Carol and his family to you, Lord, and I pray, Father, that you would bless him. Lord, that you'd bless him and keep him, that your face would shine upon him, Lord, that you'd be gracious to him, Father, and that, Lord, he would feel and find your peaceful, Lord. As he heads into this new chapter, I pray that you would just, Lord, that he would be open to whatever you would have for him. Lord, that your plans, your ways are not always our ways, but I pray, Lord, that the direction you lead, that he would follow you, and that you would bless that path that's ahead of him, Lord. So have your hands upon him and Carol. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity I've had to get to call him not only a friend but a brother, and I pray that you would just truly bless him, Lord, have your hands upon him, and just be gracious once again to him and his family, Lord. We love you, we thank you, and we praise you, Father, in your son's most precious and holy name. Amen.
Madam Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Mr. Holler, you may take the floor for the very last time, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know who this Ivan Holler person is, but I'd love to meet him. I don't know, you guys said a bunch of nice things about him, and that can't possibly be me, but I...
And he has boobs.
Yeah. I really appreciate that. I'm, I'm, I'm both honored and humbled that you all are here and that you came to support me. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. I will tell you that I work with, and I'll be brief, I know it's been a long time, but I, I'll be brief here. I want to tell you that the executive team we have here at the city is second to none. It's been my honor to work with all of you. You are, you are terrific, and you get things done for the city. When, when I started with the city, I really had two, two goals. One was I wanted to do meaningful work, and I wanted to leave the city in a better place than it was when I started. And I think we, not I, I think we have accomplished those on a number of different levels. And so I'm really pleased to have been a part of that, a part of that team. And, and I feel the same way about staff. Our staff here is second, second to none. There are, there are two people that I would like to acknowledge publicly and individually. One is Kim and one is Rosa. I'm going to start with, with Rosa. Hopefully, I can get through both of these. We'll see. I'll tell you that I work with them every day and have for, for almost my entire time here. And when I, I remember back to when I started, I walked into my office my very first day, and it was all set up and decorated, even had plants in it, and I thought, wow. When I worked for the County of San Diego, they said, here's your office, and by the way, you might want to paint it. So this is a much different experience. And oftentimes, she takes care of stuff before I can even ask. So there's a, there's just a number of things like that. Out of respect for her, and I hope you'll bear with me, I'm going to try to say this in Spanish. Recuerdo mi primer dia de trabajo cuando entré a mi oficina y estaba todo preparado, incluso con plantas. Me pregunte, ¿quién hace eso? También recuerdo las muchas veces que te encargaste de lo que antes de que te pedía ayuda. También aprecio tu conocimiento y tu intuición de personas y cómo resolver mejor un problema. Sin duda eres la mejor asistente ejecutiva que entiendo. Pero sobre todo me complace y amarte, mi amiga. Te extrañaré, Rosa. I'll miss her. This is going to be a little hard. It's been, Kim, it's been an honor. Yeah, I don't think that's going to help. It's been an honor to work for you. Even though I've worked for you, you've treated me like your peer, even though I wasn't. You are the reason that I stayed. You've been a terrific boss, fantastic city manager. I know that the city is in good hands with you as, as we go vote. So thank you, Kim. I'll miss you too. And finally, to my family. This one wasn't supposed to be so hard, but I love you all, Carol, Ryan, Austin. I'm so proud of you, and I get to spend more time with you, which is exciting. My wife and I have been married for 36 years. So I'm excited about that. Anyway, I want to thank you again for being here. I very much appreciate it. It's, it's very humbling. And I will let the rest of the meeting go on. I very much appreciate you, you showing up. Thank you.
Beautifully said, Mr. Holler. Moving on to city business, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none? Call for a motion in a second for the agenda, please. We have a motion by MPT Warren and a second by Councilmember DeForest. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to administrative updates. The city manager administrative updates is the opportunity for the city manager to provide community updates as well as department or commission announcement on current or upcoming projects. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, we have our nimble photographer, Christina Davies, who's going to come up and give you her regular report. Thank you.
Not sure how I'm going to follow Ivan's retirement, but good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm just here to provide an update. One, I always talk about what is going on in Murrieta, but another thing that I'm also working on is our website. So I'm doing, helping out with a website redesign that we have going on because part of it is we want to really help with the user experience as well as like improve the overall look of that. So we are currently in the, obviously, the design phase of it, going through it, and that should be fully redesigned by June. So look forward to kind of showcasing the new website. But part of the website redesign, we've also added in a product called Moncito, and this is going on our website. Want to go to the next slide for me? That'd be great. Perfect. So we've already added on Moncito to our website, and this actually puts a little widget at the bottom corner of it, and that's to improve ADA accessibility currently on our website. And it also will just provide a lot of data for us as we move forward with the design, show us what pages people are really visiting so we can improve on those pages and help the people of Murrieta as they're navigating through our website or future business owners. So want to ask question, if you guys have any questions on that, or I can move on to what is going on in Murrieta? Yeah? All right. I know, the fun stuff. All right, so what is going on in Murrieta? Well, this weekend, we do have our, we do have a tour de Murrieta, so that's happening April 6 and 7. And I put the link up there for anyone watching online for the full details on the races because there is a lot of information on there, and that's toursde murrieta.com. And then we have our firefighters barbecue, and that is happening on April 13. Now, I know you guys all love this, but the weather, I can't give you details yet on the weather. We're a couple weeks out, so we're just going to have to wait. But that starts at noon, and that will go through 6 o'clock in the evening. And then next, we have our State of the City that will be happening in early May. So just want to put this out there, invite the community to come to that. And I'm going to end, as always, reminding people that we love being connected. So if you want to sign up for our newsletter, as well as follow us on social media, we have all the information you'll need on our website, murrietacity.gov/Connect. Any questions?
That's all I had, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Moving on to governing body announcements, commissions, and board reports. The governing body reports is the opportunity for the city council to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, commissions, committees, and/or board meetings attendance. Reports should not exceed three minutes. And Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Madam Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Lovell.
I also have been up to nothing.
Thank you, Councilmember Lovell. Councilmember Holiday.
I don't believe that for a second, Councilmember Lovell. I've got a couple things. I attended the Regional Conservation Authority yesterday. They gave... They gave us a presentation on the number of acres land conserved that the local, federal, and state agencies have done through 22 and preliminary, preliminary numbers for 23. We're about halfway there on most of that in the plan, have a long ways to go, and of course, funding is scarce. So it was nice to get that update. And then I also attended the Lafco reconsideration of the Los Alamos Hills Water Project, which I'm excited to say they denied the reconsideration and discovered that they'd already broken ground on that project, so that project is now under construction and moving forward. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holiday. MPT Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. On March 27th, I attended the Southwest, pardon me, the Southwest Elected Leaders Collaborative Group. There was a presentation on demographic development and transportation data by Chris Gray from Western Riverside Council of Governments. He's the deputy executive director and he came with some interesting data. And also that same day, I attended the Southwest Transportation NOW, it's called TNOW Committee Meeting. I am the Marietta representative since I sit on the RTA Commission. There is an update presentation from Jeremy Smith, Canyon Lake Councilmember and RTA Chairman. And then the next day, on March 28th, I attended the Riverside Transportation Agency Commission, and there is nothing to report. All is going well. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, MPT Warren. As far as myself, I attended the Southwest Leaders Collaborative with Mayor Pro Tem Warren, and Chris Gray gave an unbelievable report on the data. In additionally, just in case some of our guests do not know, that Caltrans is no longer building freeways. And so this collaborative is, our number one goal is to deal with transportation and traffic congestion, being that Caltrans no longer is expanding freeways. And so we have to kind of think outside the box. Because as you all know, that the state mandates are requiring the cities to have high-density projects. It is estimated just the city of Marietta will have an additional 30,000 people living in our city. And that was not the plan when the city was developed and the general plan was created. And so we have to mitigate for traffic, freeway, schools, public safety, roads. And so this particular collaborative is meeting all five cities, and we're collaborating, we're thinking outside the box. We have our state representative, Kate Sanchez, here tonight, who's part of this, along with Kelly Ciarto, our senator, and all the other governmental transportation agencies at the table. So I look forward to giving you updates as this progresses. That continues my report. And now we will move on to the next agenda item, which is public comment on non-agenda items. Any person may address a governing bodies on any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing body at any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Request for more time must be made to the city clerk with a timing limited of a maximum of six minutes. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have Maricela V.
Three minutes on the clock.
There's a timer, ma'am.
I'm very nervous and it's helping me.
You know what? Please do not be nervous. We are your friend here.
Bullshit. But thank you. My name is Mari, my name is Maricela Waldheisen. My children and I are not only victims of domestic violence, but victims of police and judicial failures and incompetence. My children and I were granted multiple restraining orders which the police refused to enforce. I begged and pleaded, or I begged and pled, but we were ignored, and my abusive husband remained in my home. He was previously charged with felony vandalism, stalking, and harassment. He was also charged with making terroristic threats for wanting to burn my house down. It took multiple phone calls and almost three days of begging, begging for a police to come to finally take a report and be granted an emergency restraining order, but we had to wake up the judge at nine o'clock at night. He eventually pled guilty, receiving a suspended prison sentence, formal probation, and criminal protective order. Will Marietta Police Department ignore that one too? I served my country in the United States Marine Corps faithfully for 20 years, ma'am, 20 years and five days. Here in Marietta, and I could not protect my children. I could not protect my babies from or my home, from the threats or harm from my ex-husband or from the Marietta Police Department. My babies were suffering, their spiritual mental health were slowly melting, academics were suffering, and they were losing their childhood. On November 17th, 2019, my ex-husband, my ex-husband called the police to falsely report I had struck him. I wish I had that mighty punch, ma'am, that I so wish I had. I wish I can, I had the power. Officer Druton made the decision to arrest me, leave my children with my abuser. They were left with the abuser they were supposed to protect. Can you believe arresting their mother and leaving my children at home with their abuser? Something told Marietta Police Department saying that it was okay to do. I sat in a cell scared for the children because they were left with the man who we were supposed to be protected from, and there was nothing I could do about it. Their home, safety, and well-being were violated, but not only by my ex-husband, but by the city and the city of Marietta Police Department. That night, we were once again, had to sleep in the same home with our abuser. A few days after my arrest, a lone officer knocked on my door, and to my surprise, he apologized. He said he had trained his men to do better. I realized he was the one officer who was not afraid of accountability. To this day, thank you, sir, for doing what Marietta Police Department and city of Marietta could not. Crime is not a joke. Domestic violence is not a joke. Unfortunately, it took a CEO of LEGO to call you out and say the crime is not a joke. I will continue to challenge anyone in the judicial system who swore an oath to follow the United States Constitution that I fully still to this day defend, ma'am. And you, and your department flushed down my service, my family's service. They have the toilet because of your ego. And we just, I sat here listening to you guys celebrate a man for public safety. He was doing this and doing that, and I'm just waiting for my moment to come here and just say, no bullshit.
Mrs. Maricela, if you don't mind, I'd like to have our chief, Conrad, speak to you out in the foyer, please.
The police must be held accountable, ma'am. I only have one, one last line. The police must be held accountable for their shortcomings. Wrongs must be made right. And everyone, the police included, should pledge their allegiance to the same American flag, not the separate flag of the thin blue line. I get to choose when I speak to the police, ma'am, not you. You have a wonderful and blessed day.
Good evening, esteemed members of the Marietta City Council and cherished community of Marietta. Here I am again, Amy Edgeworth, bringing the dream of the Marietta Train Project a notch closer to reality in just three minutes at a time. But if today was your lucky day, then you might have seen me at the Marietta Public Libraries Touch a Truck Event, where I hauled out a ton of train artifacts and spent over six hours living my best life as Pearl and as local historian. And no, despite popular demand, I did not bring my full-size train today. But if you haven't heard, it's parked in Paris and it's ready for us. But I'm sure you all already know that. Back to today, it was full of louder-than-life excitement from residents, many who live right by our proposed site, all begging the question, where are you located? When do you open? Our residents of all ages continue to express their enthusiastic support in establishing a train-based cultural arts center in the heart of downtown Marietta with accessible programs for our community members of all ages. They need this, they tell me, even more than I had anticipated. They're ready for it to be open just about as much as I am. Now, fast forward through time, or rather, just five very short hours later, and here we stand, council members, city planners, community leaders, and dreamers, all pondering and planning the future of Marietta. And let's be real, some of you might even be wondering, doesn't Amy ever get tired? Who actually watches her kids? And just who does she think she is, coming in here, meeting after meeting, talking about family history and railroads, and this harebrained, month-long, free teenology tapestry fest that is actually open for signups right now? Wink, wink. And I get it, I do, because sure, I could come in here and try to dazzle you all with the kind of financial tales you're all used to hearing in this room. I could talk about a $50,000 T-Mobile Hometown Grant within our reach. Or I could try to raise the bar with the $85,000 that we aim to raise through BRICS. I mean, sure, it would become a three-minute list of opportunities that mean little to nothing without context and without proven community support. But yes, sure, those are the dry details. There's a lot of money available to accomplish our goals as an innovative, public benefit nonprofit. But to the heart, the very real connection we fostered with our community. Money, as they say, may talk, but connecting with hearts and minds from ages eight months to 80 years, that's the true magic of the Marietta Train Project. And let me tell you, it's been anything but hard. Everywhere I turn, every hand I shake brings another champion for this project aboard our community-wide journey. So why am I here, council members and community? Why am I turning our city council meetings into regular storytelling sessions? Because it's my job, my job to keep you in the loop, to share the triumphs and challenges, and yes, to assure you that we are making headway and making the right way, one brick, one grant, one community connection at a time. Thank you.
That concludes public comments. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the next item, the Consent Calendar, approval of items one through 13. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted in one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for a separate motion. Are there any other requests from city council to pull any consent calendar items for discussion or abstain from voting?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item 11 for discussion.
Madam City Clerk, do we go ahead and move to vote on the items except for item?
Eleven.
Eleven, ma'am?
That is, that is correct.
Yes. Okay, so if I have a motion?
There's no public comment on other consent calendar items.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
There is one on item 11, but we'll call that up in a moment.
Thank you. So I have a motion from Councilmember Holiday and a second from Councilmember DeForest. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero, to approve consent calendar with the exception of item 11.
Great. We will move on to item number 11. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is, would public comment go after my questions for this?
Would you like, would you like the chief to speak to this?
No, I guess I'll pose the questions. I'm right, I'm sorry. So I saw this item, and it looks like the police department's getting three new SUVs. And I wanted to just talk about the invoice, you know, how this process is handled, whether we go through RFP for these or we have some type of obligation contract, especially seeing that it's out of state. I was just curious if there's something, a process we currently have and to talk through
Chief Conrad, is that appropriate for you to come up and, or Madam City Manager?
Between the two of us, we can answer. So we purchased those vehicles as part of a cooperative. If you have more questions. We have finance sitting there as well.
Thank you. Sorry to make you get up again, sir. With the, the purchase of the three new police vehicles, which look like the Ford Interceptor, the, the invoice coming from Phil Long, I just, why do we, or what, did you try to get them local or at least in the state first? Or does this dealership have particular items that the police department needs that can't be accommodated?
Yeah, for the, the most part, council member, we cannot get Ford Explorers. We cannot get them in the state. We have been struggling, every agency's struggling. We're a couple of years behind getting vehicles. So the Riverside Chief and I spoke, and he found this dealership in Colorado. They had the vehicle that we needed. We ran it through purchasing. It's, it's, it's costing us a little bit more to get it shipped out, maybe 1,500 to $2,000 more, but it's better than not being able to get vehicles. So that's the route that we, we went with.
And forgive my ignorance, does the police department for most, I mean, the Ford Interceptor is a very common car. Is that standard status quo?
I would say that's, that's the vehicle chosen by most police departments and sheriff's departments, but there's a variety of different vehicles that, for a number of different reasons, police departments choose. That's the vehicle that we choose.
Okay. And I guess my last question, the, the fleet contract, I guess, is that, do we, we have one for the city, obviously? Do we have one separately for the PD or are they the same?
We purchase vehicles, we piggyback. I call it piggybacking on contracts, large contracts, cooperative agreements. So that is per se a fleet best price, and we always, we're required to do that with our, with our purchasing through finance. This is a cooperative agreement, yes.
Okay. And there's a, do you know if there's a timeline? Is it a, is it a, a number of years in that arrangement or agreement?
That's year to year. If I can get the vehicles in California, we will. It's impossible right now to do that. So, and we're, we're several years behind. So we'll likely purchase from this dealer again. I don't anticipate we'll be able to get our next round of vehicles either, but we'll, we'll play that year to year, case by case.
And do you believe that this is, I mean, back in the epidemic, the, the chip shortage that was happening with, especially I remember being for Ford, is this probably delays from that?
My understanding has a lot to do with COVID. Yeah. The chip issues, there's a number of different reasons that, that we can't get the vehicles. And every chief in the county, we've talked about it at length. Some of the chiefs have chosen to purchase Teslas and literally cannot get Ford Explorers. So when Chief Gonzalez and I talked and he, he told me about this dealership, I had my staff reach out. It met purchasing's guidelines. And the additional outfit and transportation cost, I pulled out of what I call 411 fund, which is a fund set aside just for law enforcement. So it's really not costing anything more. We pulled it out of our own budget.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. I, I'm sorry to hear it's still hard to get vehicles like this, and I'm glad you guys are getting good equipment replacement. So thank you for the explanation. I think that's all I have for you now. Then I'll let comment.
Any, any other council questions? Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on this agenda item?
There are. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Gilmore.
Chief, I can give you Chevrolet's tomorrow. Good evening, Mayor Stone and city council members. I'm Terry Gilmore. I'm the owner of Paradise Chevrolet Cadillac in Temecula since 1992. And my wife and I are, have been Marietta residents since 1991. So I, I come to you tonight to speak about this out-of-state purchase. And, and I'm going to ask you a question that, I'm going to follow up with some statistics, but I want to ask you why you don't support local when we all support the city of Marietta? And I'm going to back that up with some information. I'm just one of 11 dealerships. So the, the information I'm going to give you, you can multiply it any way you want, five times, six times, whatever, but just to give you an idea, I have 74 employees that live in Marietta. They earned 6.5 million in wages alone last year in 2023. We sold $25 million worth of vehicles and serviced to residents of Marietta. So whatever that percentage you get of that as well. We've spent over $100,000 in 2023 alone in the community. nonprofits, high schools, anything that you can think of. And just recently, I was approached about being the presenting sponsor of your tour to Marietta. Wish my name wasn't up there, kind of disappointing on the website. But my only condition was that I had to have it for five years. That's the kind of commitment we make to the city of Marietta and to the community. Not only do we donate money, but most of us, a lot of us have donated a lot of time. I was the chairman of the Marietta Chamber of Commerce two different times. I built the Boys and Girls Club here in Marietta that's still operating. There's, I was on the hospital board for 20 years. So not only have we donated money, but we've donated time. So the question I'm going to ask you again, and I want you to think about this, is when is it our turn? When? We think about you guys all the time, and we're a part of Marietta. And I think because our business is in Temecula, we're looked at differently. I can assure you that we care about the city of Marietta. And I'd like you to reconsider not buying anything without going through at least the process here locally. And for the Chief, I'd be happy to look for Ford's Ford. I promise I can find it.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Moving on to Councilmember comments and questions. Councilmember Holliday.
Yeah, Chief, if I can have you come back up, please. And I want to say that Mr. Gilmore didn't comment that he was the presenting sponsor for the Marietta Santa stops this last year as well, that we certainly appreciate. We had a few others, but he was the presenting sponsor. And at a future council meeting, I'll be recognizing all those sponsors. And of course, I've known Mr. Gilmore a long time, and everything he said is just a small piece of what he's done in this community. There's no question. Chief, this original company, is it 72-hour LLC? Is the one where we were buying them from? That's what I'm reading in the staff report. Phil Long is the new one. Phil Long dealership in Denver is the new one.
That's correct.
So 72-hour LLC, where are they located?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And have we purchased through them a long time?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know the answer to that. Do you know the answer to that, Madam City Manager?
I'd have to look through the agenda report again. Javier or Jennifer, do you know off the top of your head?
If you know, I'm just curious. Is there a reason that we haven't gone to the local dealerships?
We cannot get the vehicles local. We can't get the Ford vehicles that we want. None of the chiefs in the county can. There's a major shortage of these Explorers. We don't use, I've used Chevrolet Tahos from time to time, but that's not the vehicle that we've selected and have chosen to use. So we're looking for Ford Explorers.
And if Mr. Gilmore could get you Explorers, would that be an option that you would consider?
We've purchased some one-off vehicles for admin that don't need to be pursuit-rated from Temecula. Gosh, Ford in Temecula was able to get us a couple of vehicles. They're not pursuit-related, they're not interceptors, but they're for administrative vehicles or detective vehicles. So we have purchased local. I would love to purchase all of our vehicles locally, of course. That's, that would be my first choice. They're unavailable. I very much appreciate Mr. Gilmore and everything he's done for our department. If, I know he owns a Chevrolet dealership, if he's able to get me Ford Explorers, that's unknown to me.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I, yeah.
Councilmember Lovell.
I just want to kind of surmise my thoughts. And, you know, Mr. Gilmore, I think, you know, your statements of, I guess, give you the chance to provide that resource if you can. I would welcome the conversation to provide the product, as you know, especially being local to us. Whether you're Temecula or not, I feel that's very close to Marietta, obviously. So we appreciate the gesture. And I do hope that when the discussion happens, I assume it can happen, about how you can provide that resource to the city, that you will be able to deliver. So that's all I have to say. Do we?
I want to, Councilmember Holliday.
You can go first, if you like, Madam Mayor. I just, the question I have is, is this urgent that this be decided tonight?
Chief, is this urgent that we make this decision tonight?
So if we could postpone it for a few weeks and let Mr. Gilmore have a shot to get you what you want, would be acceptable?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I would only want to delay this if you believe you could deliver that conversation or make it fruitful within those two weeks, because I would not want to delay them getting the vehicles.
Yeah, I would personally think that's more than possible.
Okay. But, and specifically, the Interceptor version of the?
Okay.
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 Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Councilmember Holliday.
I would make the motion to postpone.
The motion to postpone with, is there, you want to make a timeline on that?
Next council meeting.
Okay.
We need a second?
Thank you, MPT.
I was, and I'm going like, okay, what do I do now?
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Lovell, a second by MPT Warren to postpone the purchase of our vehicles in order for Mr. Gilmore to see if he could deliver the Ford vehicles per the description that our chief has for the purchase of our Ford vehicles to the next council meeting. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Okay. Go to work, Mr. Gilmore. Moving on to the next item is Discussion Item Number 14, Amending to the Comprehensive Salary Schedule for Fiscal Year 2023-2024. Staff, when you are ready.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This item is a recommendation for the City Council to consider adopting a resolution to amend the comprehensive salary schedule for fiscal year 2023-24. Joining me tonight is Human Resources Analyst, Ms. Michelle Temez, who has worked closely with various departments throughout the city, a consulting firm, and the city manager's office to evaluate and assess certain classifications.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. The city of Marietta maintains a comprehensive salary schedule that establishes a salary range for every job classification. Each fiscal year, the City Council adopts a new salary schedule and updates it as needed throughout the year. Pursuant to the city's personnel rules, the city manager recommends adjustments to the salary schedule. The salary schedule is used for internal controls and satisfies the requirement of the Public Employees Retirement Law, the California Code of Regulations, which requires public agencies contracting with CalPERS to adopt publicly available pay schedule. For transparency, the salary schedule is published on the city website. For fiscal year 2023-24, salary schedule was adopted on June 20, 2023, and amended by the City Council on August 1 and December 19 of 2023. Staff has prepared a resolution to amend the salary schedule again to incorporate recommended position reclassifications and one new position.
The proposed amended salary schedule incorporates three position reclassifications, as Ms. Temez mentioned, and one new position. Staff recommends reclassifying the current emergency medical services coordinator position in the fire service to emergency medical services nurse coordinator due to its evolution over time and the position's requirements to manage and administer controlled substances, ensure compliance with laws, and train lower-level medical providers in the fire service. The circulation supervisor in the library is proposed to be reclassified to library services supervisor because the work has evolved into a greater degree of role and responsibility. The library services supervisor is expected to play a critical role in managing circulation services and technology and oversee the work performed by staff and volunteers. The third reclassification is code enforcement supervisor in the Development Services Department is recommended to be reclassified to code enforcement manager due to the nature and complexity of the work, the significant workload demands, and an increased span of control. The duties have expanded to a comparable level to division manager position. In addition, the proposed salary schedule amendment would add the new Director of Municipal Services classification. This new position is a department head classification and part of the executive team. The Director of Municipal Services will oversee park, street, and facility maintenance, manage fleet services, and the landscape and solid waste contracts. These functions will be transferred from the Public Works and Engineering Department as part of an organizational realignment recommended by the city manager that considered the priorities identified during the City Council workshop in January. As the City Council is aware, there are many large CIP projects on the horizon, and an increased workload is expected in Public Works and Engineering as the city continues to grow. The proposed realignment and new position are intended to help share that workload, enhance service, and increase operational efficiency and effectiveness.
To assist with assessing and evaluating the proposed changes, the city retained the professional services of Municipal Resource Group, also known as MRG. MRG's review included written position questionnaires and interviews with employees, HR, and management. The proposed changes are based on the consultant's recommendations. The updated salary range for each position was established using salary survey of benchmark agencies and the existing salary range of other city classifications.
If adopted this evening, the amended salary schedule would be effective immediately. The implementation of the emergency medical services nurse coordinator, code enforcement manager, library services, and the library services supervisor is subject to meet and confer requirements with the applicable labor associations. The fiscal impact associated with the proposed reclassifications and the new position will be incorporated into a budget during a future budget update. That concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any council members that would like to propose a question? Is that old or is that new? That's old. Seeing none? Okay, MPT Warren.
I just have one question. Are the, wait, I need to go back to there. On the slide that, the reclassifications, are those retroactive or do they start now?
They would, they would happen now.
Now, so they don't go back in time? So they're, they would start at this point, moving forward?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Need a motion and a second, please? A motion by Councilmember Holliday and a second by MPT Warren. Please vote.
Madam Mayor, with no public comment.
Sorry.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
My apologies. Madam City Clerk. Moving on to item 15. We are going to conduct a discussion and adopt Resolution Number 24-4731 to confirm the statements of costs and approve special assessments to be levied on property tax bill for nuisance abatement on three properties. Staff?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Appreciate the opportunity tonight to answer any questions that you may have. Our goal tonight is to conduct a discussion and adopt a resolution to confirm the statements of costs and approve special assessments for these properties that we perform nuisance abatements on. So there were three different properties. Those properties were 25490 Blackthorn Drive, 29500 Via Princessa, and 24189 Sedella Court. For the property located at 25490 Blackthorn, we performed an abatement on January 5, 2022. That was a landscape abatement, and it concluded in the cost of $4,000 for the total work that was done on the property by the contractor. During the week of Thanksgiving in 2023, so in November, it concluded on November 27, 2023, we performed an abatement at 29500 Via Princessa. There were three associated costs with that. The landscape abatement came to $9,705. We had attorney fees that were included in that. That was $5,361. And then the associated code enforcement cost for investigations was $1,345.50. The third property that we conducted abatement on concluded on January 3, 2024, and the total cost for that abatement was $894.37. So we're proposing that there's a resolution to adopt the total reimbursement of $21,305.87. Earlier in March, so on March 13, 2024, we posted the properties, and we mailed the appropriate notices to all the property owners for each property to let them know that tonight we'd be having these hearings and that if we would receive any opposition to that, that they come forward tonight. That's all I have for that.
Thank you, Nolan. Okay, I'm going to take council questions. I see Councilmember Toforis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question. Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone here that is, will speak on any of these?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, thank you. And just to review, we've done all the steps to try to settle this without a levy. Is that, would that be correct?
Correct. Part of that process was notifying them of the amounts that they own. So the invoices had been sent.
And how many times does a property owner get notified?
Of the conditions on the property?
Yes.
That's a repeated process. It could be anywhere from three, four, or five, depending on how long this takes. These properties, the conditions went on for some time. It was not a one-time thing.
It looks like the property has been since '22. Is that correct, on one of the properties?
Correct. That was a long-term code enforcement conditions. Finally, in 2022, we moved forward with the abatement because we had had zero response from the owner on any of the notices we sent and also on all the administrative citations that were issued.
And do we know if these owners are also residents in these properties? Or these properties tend to be more rental properties? Or do you have any analysis on any of that?
So on the property in 2022, the Blackthorn property, the owner did not live on-site. We had multiple addresses that we were aware of that they were using as mailing addresses, and we issued all of our notices to those addresses. The Via Princessa is not a residential property. And then the Saradella property was a residential property, and we attempted on multiple occasions with notices and personal contact to try and gain compliance.
All right. Well, I thank you for doing your due diligence to try to rectify this and to clean up the blight for, I'm sure, the neighboring community is very happy to see that cleaned up. So thank you for your efforts, and I appreciate your report this evening.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. I have a question. I believe that one of the properties is filing for bankruptcy, and will we have a seat at the table during the bankruptcy process to get reimbursed through that bankruptcy process?
I think this process tonight is to help us with that portion of the process.
So you will have a seat at the table when it comes down to the hearing?
Yeah, our goal is to follow up with the attorney's office.
Fantastic.
Once this concludes tonight to verify what the next step is.
Great, thank you, Nolan. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So is the Blackthorn property vacant?
So for the time being after the abatement, it was. I have not seen any activity, but the property has been maintained since we performed the abatement.
Interesting. And what about the -- what was the other one that's not on Via Princessa?
So that, the condition on that property was repairing a fence.
The fence, that's right.
So that condition has been rectified. The property is still occupied.
And the one on Via Princessa is a Jewish, used to be a Jewish temple, correct?
Correct.
And I know there's been dispute over ownership and stuff like that. So when, if we approve these tonight, do they go on the tax roll?
That would be the request as part of the process, yes.
And property taxes aren't washed away in a bankruptcy.
So we're going to double-check with our attorney's office on that process.
Pretty sure. I mean, the property taxes, I know the county assessor collects theirs regardless of whether property changed hands, goes bankrupt. You can wipe away liens, mortgages, and certain other things, other liens that aren't related to property taxes, but I've never seen property taxes go away in a bankruptcy. So is there a cost to assessing these?
It would just be typical staff time to file the liens.
Just staff time to file liens? About how much staff time do you think?
This is a relatively new process, so I'd have to use some additional research on that.
You think it'd probably be minor?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, I think that you said that there are no public comments on this agenda item.
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Right, thank you so much. Moving on to council comments or discussion, seeing none? Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember DeForest and a second by Mayor Protem Warren, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to item number sixteen, presentation and review of the City of Marietta's fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty annual comprehensive financial report and single audit reports. Staff, when you're ready.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of city council and members of the public. Jennifer Terry, finance manager, and with me tonight is our director Javier Carcamo and Brianna Schultz, engagement partner with Rogers Anderson. Malady, thank you. And Scott, we refer to them solely as Rams. They are the city's independent audit firm. Tonight, Brianna will be presenting the results from our city's fiscal year two-two-twenty-three annual comprehensive financial report, also known as ACFOR for short, as well as the city's single audit report, which is an audit of the federally funded programs. The annual comprehensive financial report has been prepared in conformance with the principles and standards in financial reporting set by the governmental accounting standard board, often referred to as GASB. In auditing our fiscal year two-two-twenty-three financials, the city's independent auditor followed audit industry standards established by the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. These standards require our auditor to provide an opinion on specific areas of our financial statements based on their observations, inquiries, sampling, and analysis. One of the objectives of the financial update is to report to the city's financial position and results of operations. In accordance with statement of auditing standards one hundred and fourteen and one hundred and fifteen, the city's auditor, the city's audit firm must report the audit results to those charged with the governance of the agency. Before I turn the presentation over to Brianna, I am pleased to share that we received an unmodified, or also known as a clean audit, a clean opinion on the city's financials. Additionally, the audit resulted in no findings for either the financial statements or the single audit. Because we have had a clean audit with no findings for the past three years, along with meeting other criteria, the city of Marietta is considered a low-risk auditee. I'll turn the presentation now over to Brianna. Jennifer took all the exciting things to talk about, so that's okay. Does the clicker work? Does it work? Okay. Let me see if it's turned on. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Thank you for having me tonight. Again, I'm Brianna Schultz, I'm an engagement partner, audit partner with Rams, we're based in San Bernardino. This was the first year of our contract with the city of Marietta, so just a little highlight of the audit objective is to express an opinion on management's financial statements, they're not those of Rams' management's. After we gather and evaluate all of the audit evidence, we are providing reasonable, not absolute assurance that the financial statements, that two-hundred-some-page document that you probably have in front of you or have you seen at some point, that those are free of material misstatement. And we're also giving an opinion as to whether they're fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, also known as GAAP. We follow multiple standards other than GAAP. We also follow GAS and GAGAS, all relative to government standards. Yes, all kinds of acronyms, the ACFOR, all of it, GASB, our audit process. So there's multiple phases here. So our interim audit procedures is where we obtain an understanding of the policies, procedures, reviewing the internal control structure, testing various cycles, so cash receipts, payroll, disbursements, and AP, procurement, compliance with the investment policy, the list goes on. And then our year-end audit procedures is really where we dig into the numbers of the financials, and we're inspecting all of the documentation that's provided and compiled by finance, asking about various transactions, events. We confirm cash investment, maybe sometimes debt or note receivable, if there are any. Those balances we'll confirm with third parties, and then performing analytical procedures kind of compare, comparing prior year to current year. And the final hump to get through is the financial statement preparation. That document is quite lengthy and a team effort, for sure. Jennifer and I were on Teams calls many, many, many times going through that. So the responsibilities of management, again, the financial statements, maintaining complete and accurate financial records, and maintaining a comprehensive internal control structure, governing body for yourselves of obviously fiduciary nature, and making sure that management is fulfilling their obligations. My responsibilities, again, to obtain reasonable assurance that those statements are free of material misstatement, all of my testing, assessing the accounting principles, whether they were used properly, and ultimately expressing an opinion on the city's financials, which is, as Jennifer mentioned, unmodified. It's the highest level of assurance that an audit firm can provide. And yeah, disclosures were probably, sorry, properly reflected, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, those are referred to as findings, none of them were identified. We also performed, did I have a slide? Oh, I did. A slide on the single audit, so she mentioned that as well. So when an entity, nonprofit, government agency is spending more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grant monies, you're subject to a single audit. And so we go through a risk assessment process, we pick which program is going to be tested. This year, for every city, it was ARPA because it was deemed high-risk by the federal government, and happy to report as well, no significant deficiencies there, no instances of noncompliance with the grant there. And that is all I have. If there are any questions pertaining to the audit process, I'd be happy to answer them.
Honorable Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before we turn it over to you for questions and comments, I just want to take a brief moment to really recognize the work of our staff this year, starting off with Jennifer Terry, our finance manager. She led the process this year with the audit and our audit team. As you can see, the process of preparing our general ledger, or also known as our books, before we turn it over to our external auditors and preparing all the reports and schedules, and lastly, preparing the financial statement, it really takes six months of work. However, I think that one of the reasons that we have a clean audit, and we had a clean audit for the last three years, is because staff continues to do an excellent work throughout the year. So I want to acknowledge the hard work and dedication from our staff, but certainly we also want to thank Brianna and her team as well for being for our auditors for the first year. Certainly takes a lot of work on their end, too, because they have a huge responsibility to get to know our system, to get to know our internal controls, and they do a lot more work on the first year than the subsequent years. So we thank you as well, Brianna, for your thorough review as part of the audit, and the professionalism of you and your staff as well.
Thank you.
With that, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Javier. Yes, I agree and concur with everything, Jennifer, thank you so much, and also Brianna, thank you. I'm not a numbers girl. God bless you and all that you do. We are so appreciative of everything, and again, God bless you. We will take questions. Councilmember DeForest.
Could we do questions and comments?
Sure, we can do whatever you want to do.
Okay, I guess it's getting late now, right? I would just like to congratulate Marietta's Finance Department on a clean audit for three years in a row. That is phenomenal, looking at the size of our budget and the complexity of our budget. And I'm so happy that our single audit was done on ARPA because we are spending a lot of money in ARPA, and it is so nice that we are in one hundred percent compliance moving forward with that. So congratulations, an amazing job by staff once again. And Javier, thank you for your leadership in finance. It has definitely been a remarkable three years of clean audits, so looking forward to more clean audits because we love transparency in our numbers, and I thank you again. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Javier, Jennifer, and your whole team, obviously, great job, well done. How long has Rams been an auditor for the city? Is this their first year? Yeah, which is something you guys had mentioned, that we typically don't have auditors that just are the ones we work with forever because obviously that's an internal control as well. Being a financial professional, as Javier knows, probably regrets me being a financial professional because I pour through the financials, I ask questions. On two other boards that I represent the city of Marietta on, I found financial errors in their statements and brought them to their attention, so I'm pretty sure I'm not welcome back there either anymore. But I can tell you that every single question I've had, every concern, every difference of opinion Javier has addressed, Jennifer has addressed, and they are ultimate professionals, and I have total confidence that the finances of the city of Marietta are in good hands, and the three years of clean audit prove that. So appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. Councilmember Lavelle.
Javier, how long have you worked for the city?
Five years now.
You know what you've done now, right? I'm going to use the P-word, you have a perfect audit, and you're on a shelf now that you cannot come down from, unfortunately. I'll echo what Ron said, I mean, it's always a pleasure getting updates from you. I mean, you're very professional and very thorough, and I think you're excellent at your job, and this obviously reflects that. Thank you to you for your leadership and your entire staff for making us look really good, and thank you to the auditor for going through this very large report for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. MPT Warren.
Which Councilmember Lavelle just speed-read through it, just like that, just a few minutes ago.
Some people on numbers I can read.
I'm going to echo everything they said without saying it. Ditto, 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 ditto. Fabulous job, great team, hats off to you. And I appreciate you taking the time to explain to us who understand numbers but sometimes don't understand how numbers get put, where they get put, and you make it a lot easier for us to make decisions, and I'm just so proud to be a part of this great city, a solid city with a solid financial background. Thank you so very much for all you do.
Thank you, MPT Warren. I want to close by echoing all of my council members on all the accolades, but the leadership starts at the top, and it starts with our city manager, and I've nailed it. Our city manager has done such a phenomenal job in selecting each and every one of you, and you've done just an excellent job, and we just want to thank you again, so good job. Thank you. Anything else? Nope. Oh, yes, hello. I'm exhausted, I don't know about all of you. Okay, so Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on this agenda item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Okay, any additional comments or discussion? Seeing none. I need, oh, I have a motion from Councilmember Holliday, a second by Councilmember DeForest, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, we're almost done. Item number seventeen, Code Enforcement Policy Subcommittee Southwest Elected Leaders Collaborative Appointment Review. Do we have a staff report? Yes, Madam City Clerk.
Madam Mayor, if it's okay, if I can do that from here?
Yes, ma'am.
Bringing something forward that the council has requested?
Yes.
So this is on the Code Enforcement Policy Subcommittee and Southwest Elected Leaders Collaborative Appointment Review. I'm just going to give a quick, brief overview of this item. Before I do that, this is just the difference between an ad hoc subcommittee and a standing committee, which at this point we all know, but this is for members of the public who may be watching at home. And I just wanted to identify here the difference between ad hoc and standing really is, you know, whether it serves a limited, single purpose, or whether it is a continuing subject matter jurisdiction, that's the biggest difference. And so the two items we'll be talking about today will be ad hoc subcommittees. So after the code enforcement workshop on March nineteenth, Mayor Stone requested an item be brought forward to consider the establishment of a code enforcement subcommittee, identifying some parameters. And at this point, I didn't know, Madam Mayor, if you would like to make any comments before we move on to what is being considered, or if you'd like me just to move forward with what staff's recommendation is.
Please move forward with staff recommendation, please.
Okay, thank you for that. So with that, what we're recommending is that there is a Code Enforcement Policy Subcommittee. It is ad hoc, limited purpose, and it would be a two-city council membership, like all the other subcommittees. With that, the purpose is to work with city staff, as I have here on the slide, to review the municipal code and applicable policies and procedures related to code enforcement, provide recommendations to the city council on changes to the code enforcement protocols. We would also request that it automatically sunsets upon a final recommendation of code enforcement protocols to the city council. That's really what we came up with when it comes to the overall purpose and the membership and the type of committee. Would there like to be a discussion on that before we move forward as to whether or not we make appointments?
Councilmember Holliday, is this new? Okay, Councilmember Holliday, you're up.
I don't have any discussion as far as forming a committee. I'm in favor of forming it, I just wanted to express interest in serving on it.
Thank you very much. And I also would like to serve on the Code Enforcement Ad hoc Committee as well. Are there any other council members that want to sit on that committee?
Seeing none so far.
Seeing none.
Yeah, yeah. So are we okay, Madam Mayor and City Council, with the purpose as drafted?
Yes.
Okay, and we have an interest from Councilmember Holliday and Mayor Stone. If it is okay with you, we can do a vote at the end after I go over the Southwest Collaborative?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. So next up is the Southwest Riverside County Elected Leaders Collaborative. This item was actually brought at the request of Councilmember Holliday on March nineteenth as well. Mr. -- Mr. Holliday requested a review of the appointments to this collaborative. On the slide, there is the already defined purpose and the current delegates, which is Mayor Stone, who was reappointed in January, and Councilmember Holliday, who was appointed in January. So, at this time, I'd like to extend the floor to Councilmember Holliday, if he would like to elaborate on his request, and then we can review whether or not reappointments are necessary.
Yes, thank you, Madam City Clerk. It was brought to my attention that MPT Warren, love that title, MPT Warren being on the RCTC Riverside County Transportation Commission would be a better fit since the current focus of the Southwest Elected Collaborative is transportation, and that gives her a link between the two entities with valuable information, and I thought that was a reasonable request. And I approached MPT Warren, and she said, as long as it didn't conflict with one of her other meetings, which, since the meeting's gotten moved, it does not, and she attended the one in my stead recently. So, I was making a motion to replace me with her.
I concur.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is Councilmember Holliday would like to withdraw from being a member, and Councilmember Warren would be the replacement delegate, secondary delegate, of course. Is that okay?
Thumbs up over here.
Yeah. Okay, so if we can move forward to the actual motion and the voting, that would be great.
See, a motion by Councilmember Holliday, a second by Councilmember DeForest. Please vote.
Motion carries out. Just a second. I haven't seen a vote. There we go. That's much better. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to governing body announcements. The governing body announcement is the opportunity for the city council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements shall not exceed two minutes. The city clerk will use a computerized timer. Councilmember DeForest.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to defer my governing body announcements for tonight, but I would also just like to make mention that April 2nd is World Autism Awareness Day, and I'd like to thank our Diversity Committee for providing us with these beautiful bracelets for autism. Autism is staggering right now in the U.S. with one out of 36 children having autism. April will not only include World Autism Awareness Day, but it also is Autism Awareness Month. It's an opportunity for all of us to deepen our understanding, engagement, and support the autism community. And I want to thank, once again, the Diversity Committee for providing the entire council with a reminder for us to wear all month. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Councilmember DeForest. Councilmember Lavelle.
I have nothing to report out at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lavelle, thank you. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Most of my governing body announcements can be read online. We did celebrate the opening of the Marietta Chick-fil-A by Costco, which was exciting. I got to know the owners a little bit. They seemed like a really nice couple. Wish them the best success. We had a public outreach for the Quahog area, which is that area east of Whitewood, north of Clinton Keith, south of Baxter Road to those residents. One of the things I wanted to make clear, one of the residents at the meeting said, "Why is the city interested in our property?" Because we're talking about how the city can help them create a community facilities just for financing of sewer and water and street improvements, that kind of stuff. And I don't know that the answer that was given was 100% clear, but the answer is, "City's not interested in anyone's property out there. We're just looking to find out what their interest is, what their plans are, and help them move forward if the city can do something to help them move forward." But if the majority want to be left alone, we're happy with that, too. We've got enough on our plate. So, and the last thing was, we participated in the City Hall Citizens Academy. That was a blast, and I now know where Emma gets her drama skills. MPT Warren, that's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holliday. MPT Warren.
Oh, my goodness, yes. Mine will come up. On March 20th, I, along with my colleagues, we attended the Marietta Wildemar Chamber of Commerce New Member Reception, and it's really a great gathering of new members to the chamber to get to know seasoned chamber members and ambassadors, and it was very well-received, and lots of people were there. I also attended the grand opening, Rimacumay for Gray's Craze at Village Walk Center, which is a charcuterie board company. If you haven't tried them, do. They're delicious. Along with the rest of my colleagues, except for, we missed you. We were at the Egg Extravaganza, and Ron Holliday loves bubble machines, and so does Lisa DeForest. As I was filled with bubbles, when I got home, there was bubbles still in my hair. I mean, it was, like, stuck together. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. So, Brian, you and your team, Laura, just fabulous. And we got it all in right before it started to downpour, which was amazing in itself because it was really threatening. But this little boy in the very right-hand corner, he was not going to go out and get eggs. There was no way he was going out there. He was hanging on to that railing with a death grip. And I looked at him, I said, "If I help you, will you go out with me?" And his mom goes, "Please, please, please, please." So, he got a whole bunch of eggs, and his mom sent me the cutest little thank-you note with this picture, thanking me for taking the time to take him out and about, and it was a lot of fun. And the last item I went to, along with Mayor Stone, we attended the Boys and Girls Club Southwest Riverside County, I believe that's the chapter, for the Great Futures Breakfast. And I got to tell you, what they are doing for our youth in this community is amazing, and it's an honor to be there, and it's an honor to support them. And I had got my picture, or had my picture taken with our wonderful Senator Kelly Cierto. That concludes my report. My email's up there. You can contact me, and these will be on the website. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, MPT Warren. You can view my governing body announcements on our website, but I do want to give kudos, Brian, to you and your entire team. What an amazing event. It's actually one of my very favorite. And even though that the weather was a little rough, they still came out and they still had a great time. So, again, thank you so much. With regards to Councilmember DeForest, with regards to autism, I have a great niece who is severely autistic. She's nonverbal, and it's an issue, and I pray that more money is donated for research for these young children and adults that are struggling with autism, and also the families, the parents and the siblings as well. So, that concludes my governing body announcements, and you can reach me through my email or phone as well. Moving on to the next item, council member requests to add or withdraw items to future agendas. Now's the time for council members to request to add an item or withdraw items for future agendas. There's no, there'll be no discussion on the requests as a brief explanation of requests may be given. The merit of the items being requested may not be discussed or debated. Now, are there any requests from my colleagues for a future agenda item? Seeing none. Okay, moving on. It is in honor of National Library Week, and I'd like to share the following quote. Libraries offer for free the wisdom of the ages and the sages, and then simply put, there's nothing for everyone inside. There's something for everyone inside. And that is from Laura Bush. So, without any further business, this meeting is now adjourned. Have a great rest of your evening.